Okay, we'll call it to order this January the thirteenth, two thousand twenty reorganization meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'd all stand and join us in pledging allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation. It will be led by Pastor Scott Dickinson of the Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this new year you've given us, a new time to kind of reevaluate what we're doing and as even the county commissioners do to restructure things. We're thankful for this time of the year just to kind of look at all that's going on in our lives. We just pray this morning that people will be safe out there in the fog and drive safe and be safe. Well, we pray for our county and all the things that are going on, all the crews that are out doing their work, all the staff doing their work. And we pray that you just make 2020 a great year for us in our county, watch over our people, protect them, be with our law enforcement, EMS, and all those folks that are out there serving us. Protect them and watch over them, be with our families and keep us healthy this year and watch over us in all that we do. Protect us in our government here and our government on the national level, watch over everything that's going on, help us, everyone to use some wisdom and real guidance from God to make decisions that have to be made. Thank you for each one of these commissioners and their families and all the staff and ask that you just have, helps have a great day today, a great week this week, and make our county all that it can be. We ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay. This time would look for a motion to adjourn the current commission.
I make a motion to adjourn the current commission?
The motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, at this time, the current commission is adjourned. Senadia, is that right? I listened to that on my phone a dozen times to get that right, but I think that's the way it was, so. Okay.
Nobody's helping because they don't know either, so.
Senadia.
There we go. Knew I was close. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting, the reorganization meeting. Our first item will be consider the selection of a commission chairperson for the ensuing year. This time, we'll open up the floor for nominations for the chairperson.
I'll nominate Ian Dickinson.
Yeah.
Thank you for the nomination. I respectfully decline and I nominate Colton Waymeyer.
You need to, you need to call for a second on Dawn's.
On, on Dawn's nomination, we need, is there a second for Ian?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion is second?
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Howard?
No.
Commissioner Dickinson?
No.
Commissioner Dunn?
He's declined, I'll say no.
Okay. Look for-
We nominate Colton Waymeyer.
Have a nomination for Commissioner Waymeyer? Is there a second?
Second.
A commission is second?
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Waymeyer will be our new chairperson for the ensuing year, and at that point, it's all yours.
All right. Well, move on to the selection of a vice chairperson for the ensuing year.
Make a motion to select Ian Dickinson as vice chair.
Motion.
A second.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes.
All right, move on to discussing the meeting dates and times for the regular meetings and study sessions for the coming year.
Do you have a question to keep them the same as this past year?
On, do we want to discuss the study sessions, the Mondays, like we talked about?
We're starting with this one and then going every two weeks after this?
Yeah. With our old schedule, we'd be hitting a lot of those holidays we talked about, but if we go every other Monday from this point, we'll miss like three or four holidays within the first six months, so.
I'll amend my motion to include the new, new schedule for the study sessions and regular schedule and time for the regular meetings.
There's nothing that we need to do next, within the next week that you feel, that's pressing?
No, no, that's, that's not the issue, and there's no issue. I would just say we historically at least discuss whether or not there's any utility to moving it the time, which I, I don't think there is, but it might be worth a discussion amongst all of you.
Yeah, we, we've discussed this numerous times since I've been up here and, and, you know, it's been brought up several times to look at some evening meetings and everything, and I know that's been tried. Mr. Stottemeyer brought that up last year, that that, they tried that. It didn't work well, didn't have any buddies showing up for that, so that's been tried and looked at, and I feel that it's best that we stay what we're doing. Makes a lot more sense when we have people coming in. They can be here when we have department heads and stuff, they're not having to come in, in the evening and so forth to do this. I think I'm for staying at the same times.
Well, when we've changed it to the evening for big things, but for regular business during the business hours makes most.
And like I think Mr. Stottemeyer brought up last year, that they can, we can go to an evening meeting, doesn't have to be a regular thing. If we have something that we feel that we need to do that to get a chance for people to come, we can do that, so.
If there's something special comes up, you know, we can always have an evening meeting for something really, need for it, you know. But I don't see any reason unless there's a need. I mean, you know, and it's not to deprive anybody, it's just, it's been tried several times and it's just never, you know, I'm all for it if it worked, but it just hasn't had, it's never worked.
Do you need a second?
He's looking for a second. Yeah, we had a motion to-
I will second, Roy. Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes.
On to consider appointing county commissioners to the various boards that we also attend outside of this meeting. Usually we go down the list and kind of discuss who's on them currently, if you'd like to stay on, or if somebody else has an interest. Then we get to the end, tally up who's on what, and unless approve it or, or change it as a whole. The first board on our list is the East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council.
I'm on those first two, so I'll just soon stay on them.
The second one would be ECAN that you're referencing. All right. The third one is the Visitor Center Board.
I'm on that one, and we haven't been meeting for a while, but I think we're going to get back to going, and I wouldn't have any problem staying on that.
Lake Region Solid Waste Authority Board?
Uh, I'd be willing to say I'd be in the more ready chairman on that board, so I'd continue.
That would make sense. Neighborhood Revitalization Program Board, that's the city of Ottawa's program to use property tax abatements.
That's me, and I'm fine with that.
All right. Chamber of Commerce, City of Ottawa Chamber of Commerce, or Ottawa Chamber of Commerce?
That's me, and is anybody else interested in that one? Roy says it's one of those, once you take it, you're, it's yours for life, I guess.
No takers, it doesn't sound like. All right. Uh, FCDC?
I'm on that, but you will, the chair will be on that, so you'll be taking that.
Chair on the county side and the mayor on the city side. Ransom Memorial Hospital Board, this would be the county's hospital board, not the Advent Health, who actually has operations now. I'm on that. I don't know how long in the future we need to keep going to that one since the building's leased out on a long-term lease and the operations are entirely with Advent Health, but, you know.
This is my understanding, they still have control over the sales tax, so they are-
They legally, of course, the sales tax is dedicated to that use, so it's not like there's-
They don't have control over the sales tax.
Actually, yeah. I think probably, I wouldn't mind still going to it, at least for the time being, but maybe one to have a conversation about in the future.
Well, I think, not to force the issue, again, you all are the county commissioners, but certainly you can have discussions right now about which, if any, of these boards you want to continue or not continue participating on. You're obviously not required to. I am in no way, shape, or form trying to encourage you to drop any off or add any on, but certainly it's well within your authority to do that if you don't feel like your presence is, you know, necessary anymore.
As far as the hospital board, I'd, you know, they legally have to meet every month. They tried to get that down to quarterly and talked about even less, but they can't, so they don't even want to have off, meetings that often. I do want to, I think, keep going, at least for the time being, because the dollars that are flowing through, at least technically, that, that board that go to the hospital, I think it'd be good just fiduciary, just to keep an eye on those dollars and, just to be there, although I have no control or no vote or no say, but I think it's the right thing to do, the responsible thing to do, so. Any other thoughts on if we keep sending somebody there?
I'm fine with it. You're on it, you're fine with going to it, so.
RCD, Resource Conservation and Development Board?
I'm willing to continue.
Wellsville Chamber, that's also you, right?
Eat them all, boy. I mean, I'm the most logical, but that's up to you guys.
That being in your district, I think is what you're referencing.
I don't want monopolized boards.
That would be a logical one for you to be on since Wellsville's entirely in your district.
I've been, I've been going to that RCND board meeting too.
The RCD one?
You have two seats on RCND, the RCND board. We have four, so.
No, two of them are appointed by the board. One of them is appointed by the commissioners and the Soil Conservation District, which that is Roy's position.
Okay.
And then, then there's a one that's conservation, I'm sorry, I say that wrong. There's one conservation, there's only, and that's appointed by the commissioner and this Conservation District. I'm trying to keep this straight. And there's two that's at large that can be appointed by the board and the others are commissioners, that they, only the commissioners appoint. And Roy's the one, the Conservation District and the board.
What do you think about Roy doing Resource Conservation District? Did you pick up the Food Policy Council? I know you had-
I've already resigned.
Oh, from the Food Policy-
Yes, I got too much.
Okay.
I took on the Basin Advisory Board and I gave my resignation last week.
And if Roy's already on there to represent another one, then they'd have to figure that out, so you could just leave it. And I'll, I could do the Food Council.
How many, how many boards you on already, Ian?
Rick, if you are contemplating a change regarding Prairie Paws?
No, probably not. I, I'm kind of-
Food Council and I do the Prairie-
I'll still, if you want.
Not necessarily, but.
Yeah, I can stay on Prairie Paws, just once a month. I just, like I said, we'll get to that later, but it's just the idea that they meet in Gardner, and now they're meeting at six o'clock in the evening in Gardner. I just, I don't understand why we got to Gardner to meet on Prairie Paws, but they do, so.
I wouldn't, that leaves the Prairie Paws we're talking about, which you're on. Say, I think I'm down to the hospital, which has kind of become not a lot of business there.
You've got the FCDC.
An FCDC. I wouldn't mind the Visitor Center if you want to get one off your plate, but if that's not what you're-
Which I've only got two right now, the Visitor Center and Prairie Paws.
So who was going to do food policy?
Ian talked, showed some interest. Is that true, Ian?
I, I would.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, so I have Roy for the first two, East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging, ECAN. I have Rick for the Visitor Center and for Prairie Paws Animal Shelter. I have Dawn for the Solid Waste Board and RCND and Wellsville Chamber. I have Ian for Neighborhood Revitalization, Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Food Policy Council. And I have Colton for FCDC and the RMH Board.
You know, you mentioned on that that the Solid Waste Authority can be as many, but there's actually two positions, and then all the rest of them can be alternate. You can have as many. And Ian Fager, the full members, and then Mr. Lee is the alternate. But you can have as many designated as you want for the alternate. You just don't get a vote as the alternate unless one of the other two is not there.
Would anyone like to change the, who's representing the outside agencies on the list, Janet Redd, or make a motion to approve them?
Other ones we give a lot of money to, the COF and Elizabeth, Elizabeth Layton, the Historical Society, you know, I don't know, but you have never ever served, had people on boards of those?
Say, I think the goal here is to, I mean, obviously to follow the funding that we give and to have a presence on boards that value what we have to offer, and so I would tell you to look at any of these and ask, you know, is there a reason for us to be on this board? And maybe there is on every one of these. And then ask about others, Elizabeth Layton being, you know, a primary example of one, that, you know, they're not going, I mean, they're probably going to greatly welcome our presence if we, I don't want to put more on your plate, but I just, I want to make sure your time is being spent in the most efficient and effective way possible. I don't, you know, go through some of these, we don't give funding to all of them, whereas there are agencies out there we give a lot of funding to, so, and we don't have that presence, but something to think about.
I always thought maybe been, I would come to start looking at this list and who should be on, that isn't on there, and, and some of these that we do maybe aren't necessary. It's not that our relationships with these other outside boards are deteriorating or need a representative, but, or at least cause for, that anything went wrong, but.
So do we invite ourselves to the table as how, how we would do it, if there was an agency that we thought maybe we might like to?
I'd be happy to reach out to the executive director of any of these organizations that you, but I, I can promise you, if they're getting funding from us, they're going to welcome a county presence on their board.
Sure. That'd probably be, I mean, we had a conversation, but it'd probably be cleaner to, as the year goes on, start that relationship, ask to be on there as opposed to them reading the newspaper and finding out that we appointed themselves to the board, so, to show up at their meetings, so.
Do you know, statutorily, do we have to make these appointments at this meeting? Or is this something that if in June, you know, we?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that we statutorily have to do this. We just do it because the chair changes and the chair has some standing boards they're on and stuff, so.
I mean, technically, if you got down to it, we could probably justify having someone on every one of our community partners' boards that we're giving money to. I mean, we're talking, well, we already have them on Prairie Paws, but-
Well, East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging, they get money indirectly through our services for-
But you have COF, you have the Layton Center, you have the Conservation District, that are all community partners that were not on their boards.
I don't think it's maybe necessary too that every single meeting, because I mean, you're going to get a lot of things on your schedule, there's going to be conflicts, but obviously when they set a budget, when they have an audit, things like that, that would be of interest to us, I think.
Well, the Conservation District, we get an invite every, every month, you know, to go.
And the Prairie Paws, one that I've brought up, I mean, I'm on it, they're a community partner. How much of, how important is it that I'm there? Probably not a lot. I mean, the numbers they're throwing around and everything, it's something once a month, I mean, I'm basically there, and that's pretty much.
Maybe you could drop down to their budget or their audit or, you know, just the, because operations, we don't have a interest in how they necessarily procure certain items.
Right.
So who would be in favor, I guess, of Elizabeth Layton Center approaching them and, and having that discussion? That would be, I think, dollar-wise, the biggest of our community partners.
It's COF, yeah. I mean, COF is pretty high, too.
Yeah, they're quite a bit higher than COF.
Yeah, I would-
Ninety-five and Elizabeth Layton Center.
Close to half a million, I think.
Yeah, I think they're a little over two hundred.
Is it? I thought it was, okay, but.
And I would, I would- I do think they have, they get money from Miami County too, and they also, I think Miami County Commissioners, I think one of them's on that board, if I-
They only contract for quite a few services for them too, in the jail and different.
It might make more sense for you to go to that than to the hospital.
I'd be happy to. Jerry can reach out and get that one set up. That leaves Historical Society and-
You're talking about Elizabeth Layton.
Elizabeth Layton Center, yeah, ELC. About the Historical Society, would be interested in approaching them?
I'd rather approach Conservation District myself, because my thought is Historical Society is technically a staff member of the county that's running that pretty much, so.
You mean?
Well, I mean, not a staff member, but the Historical Society, I'd rather, I'd rather go to the Conservation District myself.
Anybody in favor of maybe starting to attend the, asking to attend the-
I'm sure they would like that too, because they would.
I would think they would, yeah. Reach out to us to start attending our meetings.
Say, if you guys just want to give, and we talk about it, give me a list of who you would like me to reach out to, and then, provided I get absolutely, I can come back, and then you can decide which of you would like to sit on those respective boards, but.
My thought is reach out to all of our community partners and just see if, if they feel that they need someone on there, they like it the way it is or not, and if we're going to do it.
That's obviously increasing your obligations. Is there any of the current ones that we just talked about that you're not thrilled to stay on or that you think your input is largely meaningless?
I think the hospital board is eventually going to get there. I mean, ultimately, it's, that money goes to them regardless, and it's kind of necessary for them to tell the world where it goes and what they're using it for, but we don't, you know, it's ultimately the voter's sole discretion of whether or not that continues, not ours.
Certainly, given that the affiliation just happened, I can understand wanting to stay on and, yeah, absolutely.
Only one I could see is, I don't know, the Visitor Center, you're going to have Casey and Judge, you got Susan working there, you're over the department, it's a department. I mean, I don't mind being on it, I just don't know that-
Another obligation.
You're reporting to us on a regular basis on everything that's going. I don't know that that's one that I need to be sitting there on, and.
Now, on the flip side to that is, you know, we're probably looking at, and this'll all be part of a study session where we'll discuss it in depth, but you're probably looking at quarterly meetings. Historically, we've done, you know, monthly, and there's just no need for that out there, so it won't be a huge obligation if you-
Right.
Do you want to reach out to all the community partners, or do you want us to let you know which ones were interested in?
I'm happy to reach out to all of them and at least gauge their interest, and then I won't say that, you know, we want a presence on your board. It will be more just asking how they would feel about potentially doing that, and then you all can decide which of any of you would like to.
I kind of agree with your statement. There's several of them, I think, would welcome it.
I think so, yeah.
I mean, you know, I've heard that comment before, but it's never happened, but.
Well, I, I will tell you, last year was a little smoother, but two years ago, when we did community partners funding, you guys were kind of gridlocked for a while in terms of where you wanted funding to go. Having presence on that board, on those boards, I think will help. I mean, you will literally be able, assuming that they provide financials at those meetings, you will have a, you know, firsthand view of how our money's being spent, so certainly think there's merit there.
On the ECAN and also Eastern Kansas Economic Opportunity Corporation meetings, they're represented, commissions from all the, all the counties they represent in them, so I'd still want to be on those boards.
Where are we at, Janet? Do you have the list? Do you need a motion second, or?
I need a motion and a second. I'm happy to reread the list if you would like me to go down the list again.
Make a motion that we approve the list as presented by the county clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer? Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes, that brings us to our next item, which is, this is a time of year per law when we review or consider reviewing county commission districts. They are supposed to be even in population. In case the counties grow exponentially in one area, they wouldn't be, but that's always difficult on a non-census year to have good data to do anything with.
So we will be having the census this year, and we're hopeful that early next year we would have that, that data to review and, and be able to have a meaningful conversation about what those districts look like and how equal they are. I would, I would make a recommendation to you guys that we wait until next year after the census is done and, and you have some brand-new numbers to look at, and we're not just going off some guesstimates that are thrown out there by the Census Bureau.
Between censuses is just estimates, you say, that you get?
Yeah, they give estimates every year, so, I mean, that's what we've used in the past. I think we did it about six years ago, so.
Nothing, and those makes you think that we're out of?
No. I mean, we were pretty close, and we were really just splitting hairs, and we moved a few lines before, but it really was not anything super significant. They were still all fairly close and well within the guidelines, but we did move the line slightly. The, the difficulty is, is that you can't split townships and, and things, and when you're looking at, you know, populations of townships, a whole township, you know, you, you may only have two or three hundred in a township, but if you take that away from one and add it to another, then it drastically changes the layout, so.
It has to be continuous too, don't they?
Yes, you can't.
I know in '03, I think that's the last big change, and that's when the Ohio township went out of my district, the whole township, but we had to figure a way to make it continuous. It had to be, can't take one from over here, you know, and luckily it didn't want to, but that's the only way we can make it work, is we dropped Ohio from my township, and I went from the biggest to the smallest, and I think I'm pretty close to back up again almost after sixteen, seventeen years.
I mean, we are having quite a bit of growth in the city limits of Ottawa, in the eighth precinct and the seventh precinct, but I think that's only continue, going to continue, and so I think having a real accurate representation of what that looks like next year after the census and after some of those houses get done and, and see if we need to change the second commis, commission district to, you know, no longer include that or, you know, some different idea, I think.
Of course, those are all in one spot, and you see them because you drive by them. Building in the county picked up three or four years before it picked up in the city, so you don't see those houses, they're scattered in the wind.
But if you sprinkle those around the county here and there, but, you know, they're concentrated in one area, you know, so if you pick up- there, but, you know, they're concentrated in one area, you know, so if you pick up, if you pick up several hundred people in the Westwood subdivision, those are all in the eighth precinct versus, you know, having a couple in each township, you know, that maybe only adds, you know, four or five people to each township.
Well, let's consider scheduling a study session, we've considered it, does anybody want to make a motion to have that study session? I don't think there's anything to vote on when we're not taking an action, so. Anything else? We don't have the usual staff reports and all that at the end, Derek, do you have anything to add before we?
No, we'll have a meeting on, probably a pretty short meeting on Wednesday, but we do have an item or two and then, yeah, keep in mind the retreat coming up on the 27th, which I believe now will be a regular study session day.
The health meeting is also following the meeting on Wednesday.
And a joint luncheon Wednesday, so we've got kind of a-
Where's that at?
The schools.
Schools.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed or adjourned?